Good evening. I'd like to call the caucus meeting of the Florence City Council to order, and we do have some oaths of office, so I'd like to turn it over to Chief Mallory to introduce our promotion and our new officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we have two tonight. The first one is a swearing in for a promotional, and that will be promoting Sergeant Jason Reed to the rank of lieutenant. Jason's been a member of the department for over 21 years. Throughout his career, he's held the rank of officer, corporal, and sergeant. Jason was a corporal in a criminal investigative unit, and he was the sergeant in charge of the drug unit for a while. Jason's been involved in several specialties during his career. He has served as a training officer, part of the crime scene unit, and currently oversees the department's aviation unit. He is a graduate of Northwestern University Command School, where he was elected class president, and we're very proud of Jason and our department and look forward to his future.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. All right. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police lieutenant for the city of Florence, Kentucky according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided any person thus offending so help you God? Congratulations.[153.01][153.01][applause] And then I would need you to sign that one. And we have a badge for you. All right, and then if you would like to introduce your families with you today?
My father-in-law, Ed Pfaff, my wife, Janelle Reed, my son, Thurston Reed, Sullivan Reed, Morgan Reed, and my mother-in-law, Joyce Pfaff.
Very good. And we need a photo op?
Yes, please.
And next, I'd like to call forward Keith Wagner. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue to be a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police officer for the city of Florence, Kentucky according to law? And do you further solemnly swear since the adoption of the present constitution that you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.[271.88][271.88][applause] And I have you sign right here. And if you'd like to introduce your families with you?
Sure. This is my stepdad Fritz, my sister Evelyn, my mom Lisa, and my wife Kelsey.
Just real quick to introduce Keith. Keith is a new recruit for us. Keith is a new recruit for us. He's 24 years old, currently resides in Covington with his wife. He's a 2018 graduate of Cov-Cath High School and has an associate's degree from Eastern Kentucky University. Keith formerly worked for the Postal Service before coming to us. He is currently doing his online portion of the Police Academy, and then he'll go down to the academy in Richmond on June 30th for an additional 18 weeks of training there. And we are excited to add Keith to our department. Congratulations again.
Thank you.[344.24][344.24][applause]
Yeah, you can get a picture. Josh, can you take this?
Oh, you guys want to take it?
Yeah. And thank you to members of our department for coming to out tonight to show their support for their fellow officers. Next item is discussion of budget amendment number two. Linda Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the budget amendment number two is the one that actually does not have the memo on top of it. Okay? Everybody good?
Looks like this.
This is actually a very simple budget amendment, only a few changes. The first change is on page seven, and that is to account for an add-line item for the Peewee Athletic for the turf in the field where we lent them the money to take care of that project for them. The next changes are on page 11 and 12. We've talked about this many times with the redo of the golf course. We're still trying to get a handle on what the revenues and expenses should be. So based on year-to-date results so far this year and results at the end of June 30, 2023, I've gone ahead and adjusted several revenue and expenditure line items to hopefully meet where we should end up this June 30. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Linda. Next, Linda will be presenting the next item. It's the budget proposal for the fiscal year 2024-25 fiscal year.
Okay, so we did include this in your packets, but nothing has changed since the budget retreat. We haven't added anything, we haven't deleted anything. Just wanted to make sure you had a final copy of what was going to be adopted next week. Any questions on that?
Just for the viewing audience, we did have a over-five-hour meeting and went by each item, line item by line item, so I feel like council, that was over a month ago.
May 1st.
So they've had the opportunity to digest this lengthy document, so. Thank you, Linda. And the next item for discussion is amendments to job descriptions, authorized positions, and the pay plan.
We just have a couple of changes there as we talked about during the budget retreat. We're adding one person to the water department, the AM...
AMI?
AMI, I keep getting them backwards anyways. Coordinator. We're adding three police officers to the budget, and we're also adding 12 personnel in the fire department. We have a couple of job description changes, just mostly in name. The admin secretary, we decided that was kind of a little dated, so we're going to change that to admin assistant. We reduced the admin clerk by one and created a position for the property clerk in the police department, just because that's such a specialized... The functions are a little bit different than an admin and finance clerk, so the police department felt it was best to create a separate job description for that position. And other than that, just a couple of title changes. Project administrator will now be public infrastructure analyst. GIS technician will now be GIS administrator. Other than that, that's the only changes that we have, and of course, apply the 3.2% COLA to the pay plan that was ended last year for the current year. Any questions?
Any questions?
Before we go forward, I think the mayor touched on it, but we're up here listening, and what we're listening is Linda sharing with us what we agreed to over a month ago in our budget retreat. So we're all familiar with this, and that's why we're not saying anything, but that's the gist of it. Thank you.
Next, you did receive a memo with regard to board reappointments. We have Rick Rollin for code enforcement, Lila Huff for Florence Board of Adjustment and Zoning Appeals, and we have a new representative to replace Eric Hall. It would be, at Eric's request, project manager Tom Gagnon, as well as Justin Finkie as the alternate. So if there's any questions, entertain those.
Do you have attendance records for these people?
I do not have those, but I do know that they have served with quite distinction and are very reliable board members.
Are we able to get attendance records?
I'm sure that we can prepare that for you. I would assume. Could we not? We can prepare that.
Yeah, I can tell you Rick Rollin's only missed one, probably one meeting within the past year. He's a regular attendee, and then Lila Huff on the board of adjustments, I'd have to check that one, but I think I might not.
I just have a quick question. So Lila Huff's husband is Kelly Huff?
Correct.
And he's running for city council this coming term, correct?
Correct.
So that is not a conflict of interest?
I believe that she was appointed previously. This is probably maybe the third appointment, and it had been discussed previously. I was not the mayor when she was originally appointed, and I don't know if you can shed anything on that, or we can...
He's been present and active with the board and has done a good job.
Oh, her question is about with regard to Lila Huff, that there's a conflict?
No. She's asking if there... Is it a conflict of interest for Lila Huff to renew her term if her husband's running for city council?
No, it would not be.
Would not be, okay.
She would, if a conflict did arise, it's not automatic, and she would have to recuse herself on the board.
On that particular matter? That particular, okay, okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. All right. Next is discussion on the medical cannabis legislation that Mr. Hunt has prepared a presentation for council. We will just be doing a presentation tonight. We are not taking any action.
That is correct. So there's a lot of information to go through. I guess just to start us off, the purpose of tonight's presentation will be to provide you all with an overview of the current status of medical cannabis in Kentucky, the different cannabis business licenses that are going to be available, the rules enacted by the latest House bill in this last legislative session, the three options available to Florence City Council. And then we're going to look at an example of zoning text. If that is the route the council chooses to take, I do have some draft texts to look at. We're going to look at specific use standards that should be applied if the zoning text is adopted. And then we're going to do a high-level overview of the available properties based off the draft zoning text that'll be presented at the end here. So if you would turn your attention to the screen, we'll just kind of start going through this. So Senate Bill 47, which legalizes medical cannabis in the Commonwealth starting January 1, 2025, was signed by Governor Beshear on March 31, 2023. The bill established regulatory structures to, one, license and regulate medical cannabis businesses, issue medical cannabis cards to patients and caregivers, authorize medical practitioners and regulate the use of medical cannabis. There was some significant discussions on who would oversee this new statute. At one point, the ABC cabinet thought that it would be underneath their purview, but ultimately it ended up being underneath the Cabinet of Health and Family Services. And then in April 2024, House Bill 829 was passed establishing the processes and procedures for medical cannabis businesses and registered cardholders, and we're going to get into that a little more here in a few slides. So there are five business types that are identified in the state statute, and it's important to understand them because they are referred to in the proposed zoning text as well. Out of the five, I want to highlight the definition of dispensary, which is on the far right of the screen, as there's been significant interest from business owners throughout the entire country who have called about opening a dispensary in the city of Florence. To date, I've probably received about 40 calls from different people that want to open a dispensary within the city. The House bill amendment mentioned earlier goes into detail about safety and security to highlight a few points. All cannabis products must be tested. There are parameters for recalling products. There are age restrictions, and there are facilities. It really goes in a lot of detail about security and how the facilities must be secure. It is important to point out that there will be no outdoor grow operations in Kentucky. In fact, cannabis plants by law cannot be planted in the bare soil, and that's different than other states. The state has been divided into 11 different regions for dispensaries. In the box below the map here, you can see that the cabinet intends to issue a limited number of business licenses. We have been told specifically regarding dispensaries that out of Boone, Kenton, and Campbell County, that two dispensary, there will only be two dispensary licenses that are initially issued. We do believe there will be more licenses that will be issued in the future, but there has been no indication from anyone on what that looks like or the timeline surrounding it. So up until a few weeks ago, I think everybody in the state was under the impression that we had until December 30th of this year to take action on these two items unless you wanted to put it on a ballot, which I'll get into the ballot conversation here in a little bit. But in April of this year, the state issued some guidance on how cannabis license would be issued. Starting this July 1st, interested parties can submit their applications for cannabis business license. The application period will run until the end of August, and then there will be a lottery drawing in October this year, and that lottery drawing will be put on by the Kentucky Lottery Corporation. The problem with this updated timeline is that virtually nobody in Kentucky has any regulations in place. Part of the lottery requirement is applicants identify, and I believe they even have to provide a copy of the lease agreement for where their business license will be located. This has led to many people calling the city asking, you know, where can I put these, if anywhere? So what are the options US Council has? You can allow it. You can adopt zoning regulations and a business license ordinance, which I will, I have a complete rundown on the zoning in a few more slides. You can pass ordinance to prohibit it anywhere within the municipal district. Now, please note that if you do vote to ban it, state law does permit a petition to be started that could force this as a ballot measure through a referendum. You can enact a resolution that would put it on the ballot, and then to the right of that is a sample ballot question that KLC has put out, that if that's the route you go, that's probably the question that's going to be asked. If that is the route council decides to choose, the resolution would need to be filed by the county clerk by August 13, 2024. It is important to note that if the county votes no on this, the city, we can still vote yes and vice versa. So before I get into the zoning text, there are a few parameters that I had to consider before drafting the regulations. First thing is, is we cannot water down the state regulations. So for example, there's a 1,000-foot buffer that's part of KRS that, from schools and daycares. We cannot reduce that or eliminate it. We cannot cause undue burden. So an example, that would be restrict a dispensary to only operate on a Tuesday from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. We just couldn't do that. We can charge a fee from the business license perspective. However, I don't have a good idea what that looks like. I've not been able to get a consensus from anyone in the state on the fee formula or what it should be, but for the purposes of the zoning conversation we're having tonight, that's okay. We can discuss that down the road if council decides to permit this business activity. If council prefers to wait until closer to December to take action, businesses can still pursue a license through the lottery that we discussed earlier. However, this poses a significant risk for them. If you ultimately decide to prohibit it and a license has been issued, the business will be required to relocate the license to area where it is not prohibited. If you do not take action by January 1, 2025, there's an argument that could be made that the licensed business would be allowed by right to stay where it is approved regardless of what action council takes after January 1. So the zoning text. So I'll start with this. I spent probably close to 40 hours studying every parcel in the city of Florence and adjoining land uses, trying to determine a fair and reasonable accommodation. With comp planning and zoning tax, it's all about balance, finding where each one of these use categories fits. So cultivators, and that refers to the indoor grow operation, and there is multiple different classes of cultivators based on the square footage of the indoor grow that would be operating. If that was the comment into the city of Florence, and you guys choose to implement a zoning tax, I would propose that as a conditional use in I-1 and I-2 districts. Processors take the raw product and they turn it into medicinal products. Producers are nothing more than cultivators and a processor underneath one roof with one license. So both of those will be identified in the zoning text as two different things, but they would both be a conditional use in I-1 and I-2 district. Dispensaries, now this is the million-dollar question. I'm proposing this as a conditional one, it's an I-1, I-2, and a commercial 3 zoning designation only. And I will get into, the last slide I have is a map, and it's got a parcel counter. We'll go into exactly how many properties and what that means for the city of Florence. Safety compliance facilities, this is where the product is tested. I propose in this will be a conditional use in I-1, I-2, O-1, O-2, and C-3 districts only. So with all zoning designations, there's always specific use standards. We have the state mandated 1,000-foot rule from elementary schools, secondary schools, and daycare centers, and we cannot amend this, nor would I recommend that we could, that we would do it even if we could. I'm proposing additional buffer yards from non-compatible use categories. So a 500-foot buffer yard from places of worship, public parks and playgrounds, and that's actually oriented businesses. On top of that, I'm proposing 1,000-foot buffer between medical cannabis businesses. This is to prevent clusters, similar to what you see in every shopping center if you go out to Colorado. We do the same thing with short-term rentals. There's always buffer yards in between uses like that. So getting into the map. This is a comprehensive look at the zoning designations and where they would be permissible holistically. Eric's team did put this together for me, and this would have been 10 times harder if they didn't put together interactive map that I could count the parcels and the buffers and see what we have out here. So on this screen, it's zoomed out about 5,000 feet. The red circles plotted everywhere are the different buffer yards that I went over earlier. For dispensary purposes, there are about 118 parcels where they could potentially go, and I want to clarify what a parcel means in this context. A shopping plaza, which could contain 10 separate 2,000-square-foot storefronts, is counted as only one parcel. So be clear, there's more storefronts than there are parcels, if that makes sense. There's also potential for a zone change request process. For example, if you locate a C-2 zone property that abuts a C-3 zone property, you can count the density requirements of a C-3 zone property to meet the five-acre minimum density requirements needed for a zone change. Does everybody get that one? Okay. So while there are 118 parcels, there's potential to go through a long-range process and more C-3 parcels be added in there. Now, the one thing that was important to me when I was going through all this was to ensure that there was equal opportunities north, south, east, and west of the city. So on the west side of the map, which is down here, this blue line, that's the Haynes Drive corridor. There will be, there is some C-3 zone property that a dispensary technically could go there. Central Florence, this is around Sycamore Drive, these are all C-3 zone properties in which a dispensary could go. When you get up, let's see here, to the east side, this is around Goodridge here, there's some C-3 stuff. And then on the corner of Turf Way and Burlington Pike, so think around the Frishe's area, there's C-3. And then on the corner of Hopeful Church Road and Burlington Pike, this is all Zone C-3 here. And then at the very bottom, a lot of people don't realize that we actually have a small section of property down off Mountain Zion that's zoned in the city, or that's annexed into the city of Florence, and that's at Investment Way and Mountain Zion Road. Those are all Zone C-3, so this would be permissible there. So with that, I hope that was all clear. Questions? I've been reading this stuff for two weeks. If you would ask me two years ago, you know, how much would I spend like reading about cannabis, it would have been very much, but I've read every state statute you could find.
Any questions?
Can we get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
So for the dispensaries?
Yes.
At this point in time, the state will only permit two dispensaries?
Correct.
In the combined three-county area?
Correct.
Okay.
So, but we know, we all know that this is just, I think they're testing the waters.
Right.
I don't know if there's going to be a cap for the northern Kentucky region, but eventually there will be more dispensary licenses that are issued, for sure.
Does our police chief have anything to say about how we vote?
I'm sorry, about what?
Do you have any concerns or thoughts to share with us about this?
Not with the medical cannabis. I don't. With the states that have legalized it, they're really, I haven't heard of any issues that they've had with the medical cannabis. Now, if it goes recreational, then there's issues, but as far as medical cannabis, I haven't heard of any real issues with it.
Of course, you can't address anything in Kentucky because it's not passed yet.
Right, yeah, we don't have any...
We don't have any precedent.
Numbers for Kentucky, but other states, I haven't heard of anything.
So I guess I will just add that there is, unfortunately, there's a time clock that started with this. The license starts July 1 of this year, so the calls aren't going to stop. I need to be able to, not that, there's no way we'll have zoning text in place by them, but at least need to be able to give people an indication of what direction council wants to go.
So again, the three options?
Three options are you can prohibit it, you can put it on the ballot, or you can implement the zoning text, and then ultimately there will be a business license associated with that as a separate ordinance, but it's zoning tax and business license.
Does anybody have another question?
Yes.
So the state has said we can prohibit it.
Yes.
But there has not been, that, clearly that hasn't been challenged in court because it hasn't happened yet. We know that with the sexually-oriented businesses, it was determined that we had to have some zoning in place where it would be permissible.
Sure.
Because otherwise, you know, a lawsuit could say that we're prohibiting, you know, we're not allowing any access at all in the community. And how does that apply here? I mean, I know you can't really say, but do we open ourselves up to litigation for not permitting it, even though the state said we don't have to?
It's a great question. There's no doubt that there's going to be lawsuits with this. The state statute does provide clear language that cities and counties and municipalities can bow out of this, and I think that was the only way that they could get it passed because there's a Bible Belt portion of Kentucky that there's no way that this is going to fly. But they got the votes, they got it through. You know, Dale and I had discussed it a little bit, and Tom, before we went on vacation, we discussed it a lot. You know, there will be other cities that are getting sued. I don't think it is the same as SOB, but we'll see. That was definitely, by the time that lawsuit got to us, that was tested on a federal level, that been to the Supreme Court, so you're talking 10 years down the road before we would see anything like that here.
I'm not clear, and I don't want to misspeak, but the SOB ordinance, there was, like, this specifically says you can outlaw it. I don't think that the SOB ordinance said that, so I think this is a little different.
And it's going back, you know, 14 years ago or so when we passed that. I do remember there was a lot more outrage from the community with that one than this one. I have not received any calls from anyone saying, you know, you better not do this or council shouldn't take this action, which kind of surprised me a little bit, but we'll see, we'll see.
I did notice that some of the areas that were in blue were near residences.
Sure.
Did you, did you look at, like, keeping the business certain distance from residences just because of the traffic, maybe?
Sure. So traffic is something, as the person that's been doing plan review for the city forever, I look at, I don't consider this a high turnover use. I guess let me start with that. When you're looking at things like, you know, your Chick-fil-A's and Starbucks, those things inundate developments. I did put a lot of thought into a residential buffer. The problem that I was running into is you start putting in too many buffers, you don't have any property, so you might as well just ban it at that point. So I had to, you know, reduce the buffers in a lot of areas so there was available property. There's been no studies that I've been able to find that show adverse secondary effect of locating dispensary that is within a few hundred feet of a residential neighborhood.
There are adverse secondary effects of sexually-oriented businesses, though.
Sure, and there is, I think the case...
That is well-studied.
That is well-studied. You know, Florence is known as the retail community of northern Kentucky, right? So there is a little... Kentucky, right? So there is a little bit of adverse secondary effects that you have to take, consider when thinking about this because there are, we spend a lot of times recruiting national brands, national retailers, national restaurants. And I can pretty much tell you that if you're a national brand or, or a restaurant group, you will not co-locate with a dispensary. And we've been told that time and time again. So we're already at a super low, you know, occupancy rate or vacancy rate, right? So our vacancies are about 1.9% for commercial property. That's nothing. We do site search requests all the time where we're pitching properties in Florence to brokers. If you start eliminating some of your shopping centers because there's a dispensary in there, you're almost putting the city at a disadvantage. I did, I did take that into account when looking at this. That is why I didn't allow it as a conditional use in a C-2 zone, which is where most of our shopping centers are. C-3 is a little bit more restrictive. So there is a little bit of adverse secondary effect from that regard as well, and that was on our mind when we were looking at this.
Any other discussion?
When we vote on, I'm sorry, when we vote on how to move forward, are, are we voting on how to move forward and the zoning regulations at the same time?
You would be. So, yeah. So if you, if you vote, you'll vote on first the zoning because that is a longer process. And that, we will have, we have to get that done. It gives businesses the opportunity to move forward on properties because, you know, they, they can lock in, then go through the lottery process to get the, the license. We won't have the, the business license portion of this done at that time. That'll probably be in a few more months. But yes, you'll vote on it. You'll be actually voting on, excuse me, the zoning text.
Unless I hear from, you know, council that they want to ban it.
Sure.
Or they want to put it on the agenda, or on the ballot.
And I will say, it's, it's a lot of work.
There's three choices.
Whatever way we go, right? So, well, I guess a lot of the work's done on the zoning side. But if we, you know, if it's to prohibit it, that's, that's an ordinance we have to pass, is to put it on the ballot. That's a resolution that we have to write, and they're certain. When you get into referendums and things like that, you should read that KRS. You want to make your head spin. So there's a lot of, I'd really like to know kind of a direction we want to go before I, I take it that path. And it's not, you don't have to decide tonight, because you're not taking action on this. I'll be clear on that. But if it's zoning text, I will polish that up, get it in the actual format, and that's what you would be voting on.
Is, is the state doing the lottery on the county at the, or are they doing the lottery on the business? Like, will they choose the counties and then choose the business? Or do they just choose the business in whatever county they're in as?
So, that's a great question. I don't even think they know, to be honest with you.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure that's clear.
So, yeah. So I know that there is, it's not like you put your name in and you go into lottery. They, they go through everything. There, you've got to have like 100, for a dispensary, I think you've got to have $150,000 in capital. You have to be able to prove that. You have to have a, I'm pretty sure you have to have a signed lease agreement saying you can go there or hold title of the property. So there's a whole background process that they go through before they sign off on you from being able to go into the lottery. I don't know how much weight they put into, I don't think they really care out of Boone, Campbell, and Kenton. I mean, it could be 30 people that apply for two licenses, and whatever gets drawn, it gets drawn. Maybe Florence doesn't get one. I don't know. And I also don't have a good indication of what these other cities and/or counties are going to do. I've heard things. Some are going to allow it, some are going to ban it, some counties are going to allow it, some counties are going to ban it. Some won't do anything and just let it stand by right. Anything else? If you don't ask me tonight, I'll forget by the next time we meet, so.
I've been sitting here listening, trying to observe everything.
Okay.
This is very similar to what alcohol became uphill to be sold in both towns and in Florence. At that time, there was an age limit on that.
Sure.
I don't know if there's still is now or not. But is there an age limit on this particular issue?
There, there is in terms of possession limit. So if you're under 18, you cannot hold it on you. An adult has to basically dispense it for you. You can have it on you as like an edible between 18 and 21, but you cannot vape it. So you cannot smoke it. You do not get the raw product, but you can vape it. The vapes can only be held by somebody that is 21 years of age or older, from what I've read. And I'm not an expert on this, but this is just some things that I've read.
Second question.
Yeah.
Is there any indication at the present time of any other city in Kentucky that's contemplating this?
I would say every city and county in Kentucky right now is currently contemplating this. I do not have a good indication what any of, what route any of them are going to go at this point in time. Over the next two weeks, you're going to start hearing things. I think tonight, this is on the fiscal court's agenda. I know Erlinger's has, theirs coming up. Kenton County just did all their zoning presentations, so it is, everybody is held to the same timeline that we are. So it really will be June, June into July. You're going to hear about this everywhere.
Anybody else have any comments?
Just thank you for all the information.
You're welcome.
And all the work.
I'd love to see the present, or have a copy of the presentation.
Okay. Mayor's report. Our first community photo contest is ongoing until June 10th. Submit your photos at photocontest@florence-ky.gov. Full details are on our website at florence-ky.gov. Winners will be announced and featured on our website and social media platforms, and they're going to be displayed at our Art and Vendor Festival on July 20th at our historic Main Street Firehouse. Join us for Movies in the Park on Fridays in June at the Florence Nature Park, beginning June 14th at 7:00 p.m. Movies and popcorn are free. Food and drinks will be available for purchase. Movies will begin at 7:30 p.m., and the first movie will be Barbie on June 14, Wonka on June 21st, and Super Mario Brothers on June 28th. The city will host a mini golf tournament on June 22nd from 4:30 to 7:00 at our Florence World of Golf. For more information, you can talk, contact Gianna at 859-647-5441. The city of Florence will celebrate Independence Day with a Celebrate Independence Day event. It's going to be on July 3rd from 7:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m. There will be food trucks and live music, and the band East of Austin will perform, starting at 7:00 p.m. with the fireworks display, right around 10:00 p.m. And the rain date for the fireworks will be July 4th at 10:00 p.m. And on, if it does rain, all we will have that night is the fireworks. In observance of Independence Day, our city offices will be closed on July 4th. Any members of council desire recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? There is, yes, David.
June the 6th.
You had to get your history lesson down, Pat, didn't you?
Yeah.
Turn his microphone on, Miss Winkle.
We really, okay, we really would appreciate if you all really would stop and think come June the 6th of this year, because that's Normandy invasion, and there was an individual, Mrs. Winkle, there was an individual that was really dedicated to that particular issue. And Mel, if you remember, and we went down to on the river, and Tom gave us some lessons, what kind of aircraft, as well as boats and everything. He was, he was a unique individual. But most of all, we need to thank Thursday of the people that have lost their lives on June the 6th. And just what happens, not my, it's my birthday, but I, I hope I'm still alive. But anyway, please think about those people. This we ask and say thank you for this council. Number two, what we went through last Sunday or Monday, it was the greatest event that we had over the years. And several of us had been through a lot, but there was a lot of people there, and the rewards that we heard from people, it was well worth it. That's all I got to say. Good night. Thank you for coming.
Hey, Julie.
Yes.
I'd like to mention that one of our police officers is doing jumps from over there. He's doing two jumps, I believe, and you might shed some light on that. That's a great honor.
You're talking about over at Normandy?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe Lieutenant Allen is the one that's going over to do those jumps. And he's had some practice jumps down in Texas, and he'll be going over to Normandy to do those. So, pretty exciting.
Yeah. Very important piece of our history. And David, I echo your sentiments about our Memorial Day parade and program. I believe for the most part, everybody was very patriotic, and they followed up with the theme of honoring our fallen heroes. And that was a thrill. Very crowded streets, lots of kids. It's always great to see the kids, get the candy and have a great, great time. And then I think that our, our program was great. We did have a national anthem contest this year, and I think our winner just knocked it out of the park. He did a great job. And we also had a young gal who sang America the Beautiful as well, and great music by our band and our community chorus, and lots of participation. Boone County Cheerleaders were there, so just lots of community groups. It, it was a great weekend and a great fitting tribute to remember those who sacrificed. So I appreciate that. I appreciate all of our staff members who were there lining up people for the parade. It was a group effort. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Wynn?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Have a great night, everybody.